Oh, I see. Call to order, St. Joseph City Council Meeting of Monday, March 17th. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see. Item two, public comments. Anybody wishing to address the council on items not in the agenda today? Please step forward to the podium. Name an address and any concerns you have. See no one step forward. Item three, approval of the agenda.
So, second?
Motion and second on the approval of the agenda. Any changes or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. Item four, consent agenda.
I'll move on to consent, second.
Motion and second on the consent. Any issues or concerns, councilors? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. Very good. Item five, public hearing. Special event for the law.
Yes, good evening. So this will be the first of a few public hearings this evening. The law play had submitted a special event application for a law jam, which will occur on August 25th of this year. The request includes having music playing until 11:30 PM. And they're also requesting that a portion of the alley to the north of the property be closed for the event. City ordinance does require a public hearing for the event, having music past 9:30, as well as having an alley closure as part of the request. Public Works and Police Department did review this application and is recommending one-off duty officer for the event. And Police Chief is requesting that the music end at 11:00 PM as opposed to 11:30, which is consistent with what was done in 2022.
Thank you, Kayla. That means through the open.
The public hearing to the special event permit for the law. Anybody wish to address council for this event, please step to the podium. Hi, Kay.
Kay Lemke, 33 East Ash Street. I think 11:30 is a little bit too late to have it go on and is so loud that my windows and house almost, the house vibrates almost and the windows actually shake. I don't think the music needs to be that loud. Or if they could turn the stage so it faces the other direction. I'm not sure how it's actually set up. I've never gone, but I just, and a lot of the neighbors feel the same way. But I'm just here representing most of the, some of the neighborhood.
Kay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kay.
Well, because it always seems to go later. I forgot to add that, I'm sorry.
Anyone else wishing to address the law jam special event? Seeing no one else come forward, we'll close the public works or public, public, public portion of this and move on to councilors and motions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve special event. Questions or concerns? Anyone?
Yes.
Councilor Kuzner.
Did I hear that the chief wants this to end, the music to end at 11?
Yeah. Consistent with last year. The years previous, we received numerous complaints on the noise. And so the law play brought up to end it at 11 o'clock kind of voluntarily. Last year, we did not receive any complaints. So something that's working, I'd say not to stretch it farther again.
And the permit says what? 11 or 11:30?
Well, the motion says 11 PM.
Their cost is for 11:30, but the recommendation is for 11 from staff.
Can I speak to that, Kevin?
Yes. I'm confused. I mean.
Yep. Sean Reasoner Law Play at Bar. We didn't end yet last year at 11. The band that we hired plays a three-hour straight set. They like to start at sundown, which is 8:15. So we were thinking to end this year at 11:15. But if that's going to be an issue, you know, we can definitely go until 11. And if it's a community issue, we're most willing to do that. Just another part of the public comment. We partner with the St. Joe Fire Relief Fund when we do this. They help us out doing stage setup, some perimeter watching, and then stage tear down at the end of the night. We donate half of the door to, back to the Fire Relief Fund for that. And last year, they received a check for $6,000 from the law-backed Fire Relief Fund. So we're definitely, again, want to make this as much of a community event as we can. I think we're building goodwill within the community by the numbers we're seeing turn out for this. And I understand that the residents on Ash Street are the most affected by it because of their proximity to us. The stage, Bob, in years past, you brought it up, tried to turn it. We actually do turn it so the stage goes straight down the alley into the business district. I don't really see how turning it anymore would help or hurt what those complaints are. So that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Motion and second on the floor. But the current motion is to 11, 8:15 to 11:30.
And I think it should end at 11. And Ann and Sean can ask their band to stop a half hour early.
Want to amend your motion?
Hmm? Need a motion, a motion to end the music at 11:00 PM. I second that.
So we're going to kind of throw these together. But the first and second motion, we're going to amend the motion to go from 8:15 to 11. That's what I understand? Everybody comfortable with that? Motion and second, approving the permit, approving the special event, 8:15 to 11 o'clock. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Thanks, chief. Event for Sal's, special event.
Yes, so Kyle Schneider with Sal's Bar and Grill submitted his special event application for an event. It's reunion weekend. Took her on June 24th of this year. The music for that event will play until 10:30 PM. And as part of the request, he has requested a portion of the alley to the west of Sal's be closed for that event. Same with the previous public hearing. Public hearing is required because music goes past 9:30 and with the alley closure. Notices were sent to property owners within 350 feet of the event site. Public Works and the Police Department did review and they did not have any concerns.
Very good. Thanks, Kayla. That being said, we'll open the public hearing on Sal's Bar and Grill's special event request. Those wishing to be heard on that event, please come to the microphone. See no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing and open to councilors.
Move that we accept it as is. Second.
Motion and second to approve the special request as is in the application. Further questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed. Motion does carry. Did I miss something?
It's, so it is going till 10:30?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Councilor Kuzner. Did I miss something?
Sal's here.
No.
So I just want to be on record that Dale Schneider passed away on Friday. The owner of Sal's. And I'm glad we approved this motion. I just want to be on record that Sal's is one of the cornerstones of our hospitality in St. Joseph. Their family has done a lot to support this community. His funeral is on Friday at the church here in St. Joseph. And I just want to recognize Dale, his wife Diane, and Kyle for all they've done for this town.
Thank you. Item seven. Who wants to open this one? All right, Randy.
Good evening. My name is Randy Sabart. I serve as the city engineer. With me this evening is Bryce Johnson. We have a presentation for you this evening. When the city considers a public improvement, the city is required to, through the 429, chapter 429 standards, chapter, excuse me. The city is required to conduct two public improvement hearings. The first one, we describe the nature of the proposed improvements. The second hearing is what we refer to as the special assessment hearing. At that hearing, we act, the city presents what the proposed or final project costs will be. So the purpose of this evening's meeting is to present the nature of the improvement that the city is proposing. Allow you an opportunity to ask questions of us or of the council. So with that, Bryce will start. We've got a slide presentation. If you didn't notice it on the way in, there's a hard copy of the slides that you can pick up.
Can we, somebody go get them and like hand them out. There's some hard copies of what we're going to go through here tonight.
So all the same slides that we'll be presenting on the screen are available.
So you have a take-home copy, you can follow along or whatever.
Exactly. So with that.
Thanks, Ryan. You have a new job.
Okay, with that, we'll get started on the slide presentation portion of the hearing. And following that, then the mayor will entertain questions. So Bryce, if you'd.
All right. Thank you, Randy. As Randy said, my name is Bryce Johnson with SEH. We are, this is the slideshow for the public hearing of the 2023 street improvements and the 2024 Elm Street improvements. So these are the project locations. Iris Lane, 13th Avenue Northeast, 5th Avenue Northeast, 7th Avenue Northeast, Fur Street East, Gumtree Street East, Gumtree Court, Northland Drive, Ash Street East, 2nd Avenue Northeast, the Block 11 Alleyways, Fur Street East. And the Elm Street project is Elm Street and a portion of 8th Avenue. Those project locations are shown here. As I said, Iris Lane and 13th Avenue are up here in the Northland Heights, in the Northland Heights neighborhood. You can't see my cursor, can you? In the, in the center of the, of the image, we have the Northland Development, which is Gumtree Street, 5th and 7th Avenue, Fur Street, and Northland Drive. On the, on the left-hand side in the green, we have the Block 11 Alleyways. That's over near the post office and the baseball field. To the right of that, we have East Ash Street and 2nd Avenue in the red. On the far right, we have Fur Street East in the industrial park. Those are the areas of the 2023 street improvements. And in the middle, you'll see Elm Street, which has purple on both sides. That's the existing sections of Elm Street that will get pavement improvements done to them. And in the middle, in the green highlighting, is the Elm Street extension, which will connect those two existing portions of Elm Street. This is the typical pavement life cycle. Just to illustrate how, how general maintenance done at certain points in the life cycle of a road can extend that life cycle further, further on. So we typically see a seal coat and crack filling done early on, followed by an overlay, and then later on a rebuild. So the Northland Heights neighborhood, I'll begin with the 2023 street improvements. All these, all these locations will be for the 2023 street improvements. First off, we have the Northland Heights neighborhood, Iris Lane, and 13th Avenue Northeast. What we're, the scope of the work here is to, to fix, to fix a storm pipe that we believe is, is heaving due to frost. So the purple area you see is the pavement improvement, the patching that we are planning to do. On the right-hand side, you'll see the storm sewer in orange. Our, our plan would, would be to remove the, the existing storm sewer located within the street section and move that pipe outside of the street so that if any heaving does occur, that heaving will, will happen in the green space and it won't, it should not move the road and the curb and gutter anymore. With that new storm sewer, we would install a drain tile to clear water from the, the storm, the storm sewer trench to keep that, to keep that trench dry. These are the existing conditions, just the narrative of the existing conditions and the proposed improvements of Iris Lane and 13th Avenue. Again, we would, we wouldn't be reconstructing the entire street, just replacing the pavement needed to get the storm sewer work complete. This is a cross-section view showing the new storm sewer behind the curb and gutter along with a six-inch perforated drain tile. Again, to clear that water out of the storm sewer trench. Some photos of the existing conditions along 13th Avenue and Iris Lane. In this photo, you, you can see the drainage is not making it to the curb and gutter anymore due to the heaving of the movement of the storm pipe. Next, we have the Northland neighborhood consisting of 5th Avenue, 7th Avenue, Fur Street, Northland Drive, Gumtree Street, and Gumtree Court. The existing conditions and proposed improvements for this, this section. Originally constructed in the late 90s and early 2000s, most of the streets are 32-foot wide urban section with curb and gutter. Northland Drive is a 40-foot wide section. Gumtree Street is 36 feet wide. The proposed improvement in this area is to do a full-depth mill and pave. That consists of grinding and removing the existing blacktop bituminous material, grading the aggregate base that exists beneath it, and then repaving the same, same thickness of, of bituminous section. That would be done, that would be done in, in the, in all areas. In all areas of the, of this neighborhood. This is the proposed typical section for the Northland neighborhood. As you can see, we have three inches of bituminous existing, so we would mill that out, grade the existing gravel, and pave back in three inches of blacktop. On Northland Drive, it would be four inches of blacktop. Some photos from this neighborhood. The next project location, excuse me. The Loso additions and St. Joseph subdivisions. This is East Ash Street from College Avenue to 3rd Avenue Northeast and 2nd Avenue Northeast from East Ash Street to the north. These areas were reconstructed in 2002. They are a 36 to 38-foot wide urban section with curb and gutter consisting of three and a half to four and a half inches of blacktop bituminous overlying six to eight inches of aggregate base, which is a nine-ton pavement design. Our proposed improvement here would be an edge mill and one and a half inch overlay. The purpose of the edge mill is to, we mill along the curb and gutter so that the new blacktop will, will tie in and be flush to the, to the existing curb and gutter. This shows the typical street section. So as you can see, that black, that black sliver on the left would be the, the edge mill along the curb and gutter. And then we would have a one and a half inch bituminous overlay over the entire street. Some photos of Ash Street. This street is in a little bit better condition than the Northland neighborhood. That's why we can do an edge mill and overlay versus milling the entire pavement section out. This is an alley that we will add a, add some, will replace the curb and gutter, reset the catch basin, and add a concrete apron to this alley entrance on 2nd Avenue. All right, the next location, the Block 11 Alleyways. So again, this is, this is by the post office and baseball field. Sanitary sewer exists on the east and west portion of the alleyways. The existing structural section of the pavement is unknown due to the age. It's a 13 to 7-foot wide pavement section. The sanitary sewer is vitrified clay pipe, which is an older material that was used, that was used in the past. The proposed improvement would be to remove and replace the clay sanitary sewer with, with a new PVC sewer. We would then rebuild the road, the alley section with four inches of bituminous over eight inches of aggregate base. This is the typical section for the alleyways. And some photos of the existing pavement. And the sewer. The sewer was the, the, the biggest reason for this improvement. As we can see, roots, roots coming into the pipe, which can cause backups. Next location is the Northland Business Center subdivision, Fur Street East in the industrial park. The original industrial park project was constructed in 2019. Fur Street is a 40-foot wide urban section with four inches of bituminous, eight inches of aggregate base, as well as ductile iron water main and a empty PVC sewer forest main. The proposed improvement would be to extend the street and the utilities to the east, to 24th Avenue, and build that, build that 24th Avenue intersection. Typical section for this area. Again, four inches of blacktop over eight inches of aggregate base. And some photos.
The new Trobax bus site is on the left side of these photos if looking to orientate your bearings.
Yep, so this is facing east. This is, yeah, during construction, late fall of 2022. Okay, so those, those were all the locations for the 2023 street improvements. We will now move on to the 2024 Elm Street improvements. So as I mentioned before, you see the purple shade on the left and right. Those are existing, existing pavement improvements with the green section in the middle being a street extension to connect the two segments of Elm Street. The west side of Elm Street was constructed in 2001 as part of the Indian Hills subdivision. It is a 36-foot wide urban section, four and a half inches of bituminous over 10 inches of aggregate base. There are water and sewer that were installed with that. The, the utilities are in good condition. No work is needed on the, on the utilities. On the east side, we have former County Road 33. The section of Elm Street, the east-west section is 42 feet wide with four inches of bituminous overlying, eight inches of aggregate base. Again, with municipal utilities underneath the road. Those utilities are in good shape and no work is needed. We are proposing to connect the two sections and carry that 42-foot wide urban section throughout with four and a half inches of bituminous overlying, 10 inches of aggregate base. We would also have lighting improvements as shown in this image. The, the red, the red symbols there would be streetlights to illuminate, illuminate the curve. The, the new storage link site is being, currently being constructed in the middle of the frame there. And again, on the east side, we would perform an edge mill and one and a half inch bituminous overlay. West side being a full-depth mill and pave. So we have some photos. This is the west side of Elm Street. This is the east side of Elm Street. You can see the difference in pavement conditions. And on to the probable cost of the improvements. 2020, back to the 2023 street improvements. The construction cost, 1.055 million with our contingency and design costs. The total, total project cost is estimated at 1.458 million dollars.
I should pause. At this stage, the improvement hasn't been designed nor has the city solicited a construction contract. So at this stage, we're still dealing with preliminary engineering estimates. So the figures that Bryce is showing at this point are, are engineers' estimates at this stage. And so if the project advances or moves forward, the sequence of what happens next, we actually formally design the improvements. We go out for public bids. We would bring back an actual firm cost when we talk about that second public hearing, that special assessment hearing. So all the figures that you see in, in the subsequent slides are, are estimates at this phase. So these things progress somewhat linearly. We start with estimates and then we end up getting firm, firm construction bids later on in the process. So keep that in mind, please.
All right. And the 2024 Elm Street improvements, the construction costs are estimated at $842,900 with contingencies and design cost, as well as an inflationary adjustment being that the project is, is slated to be constructed in 2024. That brings the total estimated cost to 1.671 million dollars. So this is just a different breakdown of the cost. We see the Northland Heights subdivision, the Northland subdivision, Ash Street and 2nd Avenue, the alleyways, the industrial park, and then we have Elm Street at the bottom. Preliminary project funding. On the, on the left-hand side, we see an estimated surface assessment, 60%. This, this is modeling the city's existing assessment policy. So we have the surface assessment for the, for the surface improvements. And then the sanitary sewer assessment, again, it's 60%. The Northland Business Center subdivision, Fur Street, in the industrial park. There is some leftover money that will be utilized to pay for, for, for those improvements.
So the 60% that's listed in those two columns is, is deliberate. As Bryce mentioned, the city's special assessment policy describes that the city will levy up to 60% of the project costs in a reconstruction scenario. One of the next steps that the city will take if the project advances, the city commissions what we call a special benefit analysis. It's a special appraiser that takes a look at the condition of the properties and, and the public improvements and, and provides the city an opinion of the improvement value to, to increase the market value. And so that actually defines, that, that report or that assessment that, that the special appraiser makes defines the upper limit of what the city actually proceeds with the assessment. So in theory, the 60% would represent the, the worst-case scenario. And in actuality, we typically find after that assessment benefit analysis is done that, that the assessments are lower than what we project at this stage. So we're trying to, trying to present to you typically the most conservative view of what the special assessments would look like. But we don't, that report is commissioned after these proceedings, so we don't have those numbers to share with you at this point. Actually, we'll have those available for the second hearing that I referenced. So the 60% again is, is what is in the assessment policy at this point.
What if you live on a corner? We live on Northland and Fur. How, how, how does that can us?
We, we do have, we do have an example of that.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, we'll hold all those questions to the public hearing.
If you wouldn't mind, so we can finish the presentation, then certainly ask those questions later.
We'll, we'll touch on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so as Randy mentioned, if you look at the bottom, we have $676,200 of estimated surface assessments, roughly $50,000 of sanitary sewer assessments. roughly fifty thousand dollars of sanitary sewer assessments, and then a estimated city subsidy of roughly two point one million dollars. So of the total project cost, two-thirds of that we are estimating to be the city subsidy. Now we have some information on the preliminary special assessments. So as Randy mentioned, the, what we are listing is the, the, the max assessment rate at sixty percent. It has been and continues to be the policy of the City of Saint Joseph that when infrastructure improvements are constructed, providing benefit to a particular area, those costs shall be levied against benefiting properties. The city commissions a special assessment benefit report, as Randy mentioned, to identify a range of market benefit by the project. We specially assess benefits derived from the surface improvements. So as we saw on the previous slide, up to sixty percent of street and overlay reconstruct costs are assessed. Up to one hundred percent of street cost assessed to annex property with no previous assessment unless determined otherwise. Forty percent or more of the cost is subsidized by the city. Special assessments for surface improvements are calculated on the basis of the frontage on a per-linear foot basis. The frontage is determined by, uh, so if you have an interior lot, it's, it's your direct frontage, abutting the road. Rectangular corner lots, the sum of one hundred percent of the short side footage and fifty percent of the long side. So if you live on a fifty-foot by one hundred-foot lot, you will pay fifty feet on the short side street and then you pay half of that long side. So you'll pay fifty foot on the long side if you have a one hundred foot on your long side lot. And that's a very, that's a very common, uh, policy in, in many different cities. The selected assessment basis or methodology is meant to balance equity and distribution of special assessment. Special assessment payment terms and interest rate will be determined by the council prior to the special assessment hearing, which is the second public hearing that Randy referenced earlier.
And maybe I'll interject to, to address your question. Despite, what, what Bryce described in those top three bullets is how we compute the special assessments. That special benefit, uh, analysis or report still defines the cap. So even though a corner lot might be assessed on two sides, the capped amount, uh, will, will still limit the total amount that's, that's specially assessed. So you're treated. So the assessment benefit report treats you the same as any internal in, interior lot. So you'll be capped the same way that a lot on Gumtree. So you're not paying a premium for living on a corner lot on Northland Drive. So you'll be treated. So the, the assessment approach will, will remedy the concern that you've raised because you'll be treated the same way.
So here we have the special assessment rates. The project area is the column on the left with the type of improvement to the right of that. And then you can see the rates throughout the table. Is there anything you want to touch on there?
No, again, these are preliminary rates based on our estimates at this stage. So these numbers or figures will change once the project is, is advertised for bids. And we have, uh, the city has, uh, firm contract amounts with a, with a contractor. So these again are preliminary at this stage.
So again, here we have a, an example calculation. Thirty-six to thirty-eight foot wide street overlay. The cost per linear foot being thirty-nine dollars forty-eight cents times an eighty-foot lot yields the total assessment of three thousand one hundred fifty-eight and forty cents. So a thirty-six to thirty-eight foot mill and pave, the cost is higher because there's more, the, the scope of work is larger. So that cost per linear foot times a fifty-foot lot would yield a similar total assessment of three thousand fourteen dollars and fifty cents. On the bottom is an example of a corner lot. Eighty foot on the front and one hundred foot on the side. So the, the front footage would be assessed at one hundred percent of the abutting footage. The side would be assessed at half of the long side footage to yield the total assessment shown. This is a preliminary schedule for the 2023 street improvements. We are sitting at the public hearing on April seventeenth. So we would be looking to follow this preliminary schedule. So that next special assessment hearing would be June nineteenth of this year, starting construction in July. Preliminary schedule for the 2024 Elm Street improvements, being that this project is slated to be constructed in 2024, the, the schedule is more, is more drawn out. So we would be looking at a special assessment hearing in January of 2024 with construction starting in April of 2024.
One of the reasons Elm Street's identified for 2024, the, the city anticipates that Stearns County will be making an improvement to County Road One Thirty-Three in 2024, uh, between County Road Seventy-Five and Fifteenth Avenue, so just north, uh, uh, in the business park. And so the city is looking to position this project to time with the improvements that Stearns County will ultimately be making on, on County Road One Thirty-Three. So that's, that's why you're seeing these, uh, separated between, uh, two years. So with that, that wraps up our slide presentation and, uh, we'll turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you guys. So, uh, that being said, we'll open up the public hearing. So anybody who wishes to address the council, engineers, if we can answer any questions, please step to the podium, name and address, and we'll do the best to answer your questions.
Frank Ossendorf, Six Fifteenth, Seventh Avenue Northeast. I have three questions. Uh, I live on the corner of Gumtree and Seventh. On both streets, there are white lines painted on the curb where the curb is in bad shape. Am I to assume those sections are going to be replaced? Is that what that means?
I know I had a colleague, another member of our staff to, to paint those. And so if we have cracked curb or curb that's heaved, we intend to do spot, spot repairs. So we are not proposing to do, uh, a reconstruct of the whole street. So if, if those white marks, cones, I don't know if they were put there by somebody else. That's why I'm kind of qualifying my answer. But if, if the curb is cracked or if it's heaved, then it was likely placed by our staff and, and intended to be removed or placed. Yeah, so for what you're describing, that was flaked for that reason.
Okay, second question. I don't live on Thirteenth, but I have a grandson that does, so I'm speaking on his behalf. The storm sewer that runs along Thirteenth, you're moving it from the street to the grassy area beside. It's going to pass over under a driveway. What are you doing different that's going to prevent that sewer line from pushing up under the driveway and ruining the driveway instead of the, the street?
So the, the detail that, that Bryce had shown very quickly shows two things. Uh, there is a, an additional sand section to bed the, uh, the storm sewer so that it's a permeable layer. We're also proposing a second, Bryce described it as one. There's actually a drain tile there today. So there's actually a eighteen-inch sand section beneath the gravel and a drain tile behind the back of the curb. So there's already provisions to, to intercept drainage. We believe there's spring activity in that neighborhood creating and sending more below-surface water. So the, the actual, the six-inch drain tile that, that's, uh, being shown in this illustration is meant to be at the bottom layer. Again, another secondary defense, if you would, to intercept drainage. So between the sand layer and the second drain tile, uh, on the outside of the, of the, of the storm sewer, uh, we're proposing other remedies to, to try to intercept that subsurface drainage.
Then why wouldn't you do that in the street?
It, pardon me?
Why wouldn't you do that in the street?
Well, we want to get it before the water gets to the street. So the purpose of intercepting it here is so that that water doesn't migrate under the pavement and, and freeze. So we're trying to intercept it before subsurface drainage reaches the pavement.
I presume that you'll monitor what happens to the driveways?
Yes.
Last question. The roughest part of Northway Drive is from Fur down to County Road Seventy-Five. There's also no sidewalk in that section. Why have those two been neglected?
It's not so much neglected as much as, as a timing. So the city has had on its capital improvement plan for several years, uh, an improvement to Northland Drive to actually convert it from a rural section the way it is today to an urban section with trail or sidewalk improvements. The city, this, Northland Drive is what we call a state aid city or state aid street. And so because of the City of Saint Joseph's size, the city qualifies for additional funding for the straight, for the street, for certain streets on our network. It takes a while for the city to accumulate enough money in that account to be able to fund these types of improvements. And so, uh, it, it's not that we've, uh, not been looking to make an improvement. We've been nursing the, nursing the street between maintenance activities, crack sealing, uh, over the last several years. But ultimately, long-term, the city does have a plan to improve Northland Drive with pedestrian improvements down to the intersection.
Is there a timeline?
We had anticipated in the next two years. Uh, but that's probably the best that I can describe. Ultimately, it'll be the council's discretion when to pull the trigger on that project. But again, we've been trying to build the, the bank account, if you would, in terms of having the state aid dollars available to, to fund that improvement.
Clearly, that's the worst part of the entire script in Northland Drive.
Uh, Gumtree, between Gumtree and North of Gumtree, I think it's given it a challenge. But, uh, I, I would agree that that shows some of the, the more pavement deterioration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Lindgren, Six Oh Six, First Street. Now, he brought up a really good question over there. We live on the corner lot of Fur and Northland. We are going to be assessed now for road improvement. And you're saying in two years, you're going to probably put a sidewalk going down Northland. So we once again would be assessed for the exact same land?
No, uh, the sidewalk improvements, the city has not levied assessments for the sidewalk improvements. So you've likely noticed sidewalk the last couple of years being improved, uh, on the east side. I'm, I'm sorry?
There were no sidewalks.
No, there's no, there were no, no sidewalks. However, the city has a rather large park in, in Northland Park and, and getting access to the park has been a priority for the city. So as we've approached these pavement improvements over time, we've been mindful to extend sidewalk.
Can I have that in writing then, when the sidewalk goes in in two years? That there will not be a charge for us to that? You're looking at the, what I'm saying. We've got.
Uh, and, and the best answer I can provide you at this point is the city, for the past two sidewalk improvements, the city has not levied assessments for the sidewalk improvements. Those were, city covered a hundred percent of those costs.
Okay, I did not know that.
And, and it's different in, in the situation where a property owner or a neighborhood, if they petition the city and request sidewalks be constructed, then the city's policy is that they'll levy assessments for sidewalks. Where the city initiates a sidewalk improvement, the city covers the cost. But the past two have not been specially assessed.
The gentleman that was up before me was absolutely correct. That sidewalk should be in there. There are little kids running all over the place over there. You're right up to it. You went right up to it last year. All you had to do was cross the street and it would have been in there. There is going to be someone hurt in that section over there with the apartment buildings and everything else that's there.
So we fully agree with you on the need. Uh, the reason or the explanation why the sidewalk or trail hasn't been constructed at this point, I, I mentioned the city's plan is to convert the rural section, no curb and gutter, to a curb and gutter section. If the city had improved, uh, a sidewalk or trail, say today or two years ago, it likely would be disturbed by the street grading and construction. So we didn't want to be wasteful, uh, in, in terms of putting it.
Trucks go through there all the time. Big, heavy trucks. They're going to go through it two years from now, too.
Not on the sidewalk, I hope.
On the road.
So, uh, uh, again, I'm, I'm addressing why the sidewalk hasn't been constructed up to this point.
Hi, Danielle Olson, Six One Seven Gumtree East. Um, I am curious as to this Elm Tree or Elm expansion. Very excited about that. Love the idea of not having to go around on Seventy-Five to get to Colburn's, especially as a mother of two young kids. Curious, though, as to plans for traffic control at the Elm Street expansion in County One Thirty-Three as that is an extremely busy county road and seems like it's getting ever busier.
So we haven't seen the county's plans yet. The city's anticipating that a roundabout will, will be developed at that intersection. But I, I don't want to say that for certain yet because the city hasn't seen the, the county's plans. But that's what we understand, uh, to this point.
But it's really the county's, um, we'd have to dig with the county, so.
Thank you very much.
But another reason why this, this improvement wasn't proposed sooner is that given we don't have that traffic control at the intersection, we didn't want to connect Elm Street prematurely. Anyone else?
Bill Mert, and I'm the managing partner for Northland Plaza concerning the Elm Street. It's hard to have, make any comments about it when we're completely in the dark, how you're going to handle all the property.
So we have to kind of take a step at a time here. As, as you recall, staff have met with you. I recognize there's a couple of property owners here this evening to at least give you a, a heads up that the city intends to approach you to, to purchase Accra, uh, Right-of-Way. Uh, one of the line items in the cost estimate was, was a budget number to purchase that Right-of-Way. Be premature to talk to you about buying the project or buying property if the project doesn't move forward. Uh, so city needs to take this step in terms of communicating the nature of the improvement for the city to order it in. Then the city staff, likely myself and others, will be reapproaching you again to talk about, uh, uh, terms and valuation for, for property acquisition. So we have to kind of get through this stage to, to order an improvement before we can talk further about purchase.
When will they, will they be discussing your requirements and what you want to do with the property owners?
Yes, I, I, I'm anticipating a similar meeting that we had several months ago with, with each of the property owners to, to describe, uh, the nature of the improvements. We've since surveyed the property. Uh, we haven't done a final design yet. So between council action, ordering the design and those meetings, we'll have more details to share what the nature of the road improvements, nature of the drainage improvements will look like. So again, progressively, we'll have more information to share with you as the project advances.
It would be nice to have some input into that as it goes along because I, I've got at least your initial picture show. I have several concerns about what you're doing. Uh, it, it looks to me like, in fact, it's obvious that this roadway has been designed with the storage facility in mind. I mean, it's costing you a lot more money to make that fancy little curve around there just to accommodate them having a bigger plot and more buildings.
You, you're correct. I mean, the curvature does account for the, the property that the, uh, that the storage link has purchased. So yes, you, you're absolutely correct that the curvature is related. The city certainly wanted to see another development, uh, occur in, in that area. And so, uh, the desire was to define a road improvement that would still allow, uh, a development activity to occur.
Well, you certainly are going to pay for it because the easiest thing would have been to go right through that property and make a slight offset. And now we're redoing all those entryways for, for Goldman and the vet clinic and there are a lot of extra work in there just to accommodate them.
I, I am not disagreeing, uh.
As long as you, we get some input into the design so that we're not left, uh, basically, basically suffering because of what the storage facility wants.
I, I, I can stay with confidence. Our next step after the council orders the improvement in will be to meet again with the property owners, take that input that you're describing. So, uh, that is the next step.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Kevin Durkasing, um, 701 East Elm. I'm a co-owner of Imperial Properties and Eight Builders. Um, similar situation here. Elm Street was existing on both sides. And, um, you draw a line across and you have a street. You allowed those two south buildings, um, to go into that, which really made that dip. Now, to allow that, you have to, uh, deal with the Esquin, you have to deal with me without, with taking property. That part I didn't, that part I didn't understand. Elm Street to the west, the, the curb that's, uh, there now, is that being removed? That's staying there right now.
Correct.
So, that would be the north line of that road coming through?
Correct. Excepted in, in, in the green area...
That'll follow through my property. I mean, and I might be jumping the gun here a little bit. I realize this is 24, so, um, but there's been no initiation, um, from you guys to put up preliminary markers, very little conversations. I mean, we don't know where any of this is going. All I hear about is $30,000 of assessment. So, I would like to see where that's going. Yeah, I mean, before any comment or anything goes any further. Um, the, the period now is too late because you guys allowed those buildings to be, be where they are. That is, that was my biggest concern, is, you know, why that happened? You know, if you'd eliminated that, there's plenty of room. You could have moved to the back, or you could have said, hey, you have, uh, 12 less, you know, parcels or 12 less units. You know, you, you, it, that could have been done better. This is, you know, this is definitely an afterthought. 20 years ago, I put in, um, I was the first building back there. I put in that road, that curb, the bituminous. I turned it over to the city, and now you're going to take probably about 30 feet of my property in order to make this happen. So, the other guy had room, and you're going to charge me for it? It just, eh, somehow, that just doesn't seem right, you know? The time for this was a year ago, not now. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Ryan Parsons, Elm Street. I just had a question about irregular interior lot assessments. So, with Elm Street there, I have, I mean, I'm probably 12 feet of frontage on Elm Street, but it's a very wide lot. Um, it's a 30-acre parcel, so how am I going to be assessed on that? What will that look like in your projections?
Could you help us out with which parcel is yours on, on the map?
To the northeast of...
Right next to Obeez.
Of, of Storage Link, right?
You're just northeast of the Storage Link, uh...
Yep.
Like here?
Yep.
Yeah, correct. It's that piece.
We averaged.
Yeah, so, in that, for that particular parcel, because your, your lot is what we would describe as partially abutting and partially non-abutting. We actually looked at, uh, limiting the width of the assessment or the assessable footage to be similar to, to, um, the neighboring parcels. So, you have quite a bit of footage off of, of Elm Street to, to the northeast. And so, we actually looked at cutting, from a measurement standpoint, your lot in half and using half of the frontage that would have been along the old County Road 133 right-of-way. So, we're not referencing the full depth of your property. But again, looking at an average benefit similar to, uh, to your neighboring parcels. So, in, in your case, we have to take into account that you, you share a similar benefit to the road as, as your neighbors do, yet you have more utilization of, of property than they might. But again, we come back to the assessment benefit analysis in terms of what's the maximum benefit a parcel of your size can sustain? So, but as far as the footage computation, we were referencing half of the footage that basically paralleled the County Road 133 frontage.
Will, will that, um, benefit analysis be different as different parcels are owned differently?
Exactly. So, they look at the different classes of properties, so commercial versus residential, yes.
Okay. And how do, how was it determined to take, like, half of it versus a quarter of it or three-quarters of it? Or when, can I be part of that negotiation, or how does that work?
It's, it's not so much a negotiation. Again, we tried to, we're, we're looking to be equitable in, in trying to equalize the benefit that you would receive on your property versus, um, the, uh, Goleman property or, or the, the trucking property. And, and treating as, as closely as we can, since the parcels are not the same size, how do we normalize what that benefit is? And so, um, the, the frontage that I'm describing is an initial estimate, and then we rely on that assessment benefit analysis to, to define what does the market say, uh, your benefit is.
And will that be something on, in June that we can talk more about?
Yeah, that, that'll be available in June when we, when we get to that second hearing. That report, uh, is, is, would be available to the city.
Great, thanks.
Bill Hert from Northland Plaza again. I just want to, uh, make another comment that when we had this one meeting so far, I was told that we would not be charged for any of the platting or legal expenses. You know, it's not going to make sense for you to buy property from me, and I turn around and give it back to you for assessments. That road is absolutely no benefit to me, zero. And it's no benefit to the Equine Center. It's no benefit to, uh, to Imperial. Why do we need it? We don't need it. It, it's nice for the city, and I've heard rumors that you wanted, wanted to do that for years. But if we're going to have to pay for it, I'd, I'd say no. There's no benefit. You'd have to show it to me.
So, we're not, the city is not proposing to assess the, the construction costs. We're actually proposing to assess at an overlay level. So, similar to what the properties on, in the purple, uh, would be assessed from a, from a pavement maintenance perspective. So, again, we're, we're hearing what, what you and others have said with respect to what's the true benefit to you, but the proposal for the assessment rates are not a full construction cost assessment rate.
Okay, but even for an overlay, why, we don't need an overlay. That corner is bad, but that's it.
So, even if the city was not proposing to connect the two streets, you do benefit or you do have access, whether it be from the west side or the east side. And so, improving those sections or maintaining those sections of, of roadway, similar to the residential sections, certainly are important to a commercial business. Having access and having, having a, a, a road that's passable, I would say, is, is important to commercial operations.
Well, I, I, I agree to keep the road in decent shape, but I don't see that it's in bad shape now, except for that corner.
So, again, from a, from a pavement maintenance perspective, when, when we design bituminous streets, we design them for a 20-year period. Uh, and what I mean by 20-year period, we estimate the impact that truck traffic, vehicle traffic, damage by vehicles, weather, all of those types of conditions. We designed pa, bituminous streets to last 20 years. In many instances, between overlays, uh, we can stretch that life even, even longer. And that's where a couple of these improvements have, we described an inch and a half of, of bituminous overlay. That's with the intent of stretching that life of that pavement. In some conditions where soil types are not as good, we have poor soils in areas of the Northland neighborhood, uh, sometimes 20 years is as long as we can get with a street. Um, and we have to make an assessment. When we look at the condition of the pavement, can we overlay this and stretch it, stretch the life out another 10, 12 years? Or are we putting good money towards bad? And, and so, when we look at Gumtree, parts of Northland, parts of, of the west side of Elm Street, we had concerns about proposing an overlay. And, and so, to really improve that pavement condition, we're proposing to mill out the bituminous. But it is an engineering judgment decision at that point that if we don't think a pavement is going to last another 10 years, we generally will not propose an overlay, uh, because it oftentimes is a Band-Aid that we're not going to see the return on investment.
Well, as I said, it doesn't make sense for you to buy property from me and then take it back with, with assessments for a road that doesn't benefit me at all. And it doesn't benefit anybody along that road, except the storage facility.
So, the itemizations of the costs that we showed, we have to take it, you know, as far as the statute and, and the cost accounting, we have to track all of the costs, whether they're the legal, the contingency, engineering, et cetera. So, the itemization that you saw was deliberate because we have to track it all. Uh, the, the nature of the purchase agreement, uh, that the city makes between you and a property owner is really independent of, of those numbers. It's based on the value and, and, uh, market conditions for that property.
Well, maybe that's my way out, is I just sell that piece of property to a developer and let him put a building up there.
Uh, the county does the, does...
Oh, for the market, yeah.
For property taxes, is that what you're referring to, or...
Well, I mean, you know, for benefit analysis.
Yeah, the benefit analysis.
Oh, the benefit analysis. Uh, it's a company out of Plymouth, uh, called Nagel, uh, Nagel Appraisals. City has been working with that consultant, I think, at least since 2013, 2014. So, um, they have done this type of analysis for several public improvement projects, uh, throughout the years. So, there's nothing preventing a property owner from soliciting their own, uh, market appraisal? But the city is, city will retain, uh, Nagel for, for their offer? No, they, they will...
It's an, it's an independent firm. They're going to come out and do evaluations on your property and what the improvements would be, how it would be evaluated based on other such improvements related to that. There's, I mean, they're not going to ask you what you think your improvement's worth. They're going to go out and do some evaluation of other studies similar to what we're asking for here. And they're going to bring that report back to us. Now, anybody that wants to can, you know, hire their own kind of firm, individual consultant to do their own evaluation of what the, what the improvement would or would not be. But that's what we use as a basis for how much we may or may not be able to, um, charge.
Have you given any consideration as to what will happen if they open Elm Street up for the traffic jam that will be at those stoplights to get across 75 over there? Their cars are lined up already, and everyone coming up will also, there'll be even a worse traffic ga, jam at those lights over there. Has any consideration been given how close those are to the lights for people to get in and out of there? Doesn't the city have a right-of-way between our land and the insurance company that would have, don't, do you not own that already as a right-of-way that you could go across if the need is to be across? Is there any reason that's not being used?
If I'm understanding you, you're, you're describing north of, north of this alignment that's shown on the screen now?
Yes, right between the insurance company, Mutual, and our house. There's a cutout, and I've been told that that's a city right-of-way for a road to go through there. Would that help, rather than going through Elm and move it up a little bit? So, there's room for cars to get in and out?
It, it wouldn't help from the standpoint of there's a rather substantial wetland, uh, behind the Northland, behind these subdivisions, that filling would, would create a logistical problem that we could not likely overcome.
But you wouldn't be destroying any businesses or anything that way because there's nothing there.
Well, we'd still be impacting businesses, actually, by cutting across in, in the back, if I understand your question.
I think you'd miss most of them.
But I'm not aware of a public, a dedicated right-of-way. There may be a drain.
I think there is.
There's a utility easement for, for sanitary sewer service, but I'm not aware of a 60 or 66-foot wide away. But I'll look into it. Anyone else?
Just a quick ques, just a quick question on the preliminary assessment rates. Um, for the 36 to 38 street overlay, it's 39.48, I believe, for, um, the overlay. And then, and that's Ash Street, and Elm Street is a 42-foot wide with a $27. So, you're talking 12, I know it's only $12.30 difference, but a narrower, um, it appears a narrower street's being assessed more, and I, that doesn't make any sense to me. Unless I'm misreading it. We're talking between Ash Street and Elm Street.
So, Ash Street is, is an, an overlay, and what was the other one that you were asking?
Elm Street is also an overlay. Ash Street's 36 to 38-wide, and Elm is 42-wide, but it's a $12 cheaper than Ash Street, so that didn't make any sense.
In, in this particular case, I think what we're seeing is, when we, when we calculate the assessment rates, we're doing it on a, on a neighborhood basis. And so, if we have more property owners to, to distribute the cost, that, that has the effect of lowering the assessment rate. Again, I come back to that special assessment benefit report that's still going to define the, the maximum amount of the assessment, regardless of what the rate is.
Okay, I'm not sure how populated that Elm Street is, but Ash Street is continual neighbor, so, on both sides.
Anyone else wishing to speak tonight? Seeing no one else come forward, we're going to close the public hearing and move into counselor, actions, questions, concerns?
I'll move on, Resolution 2023-019.
Oh, shoot.
Ordering the improvement and preparation of plans for the 2023 improvements.
Second?
Motion second, 2023-19, improvements and plans for the 2023 street improvements, correct? That's, that, okay. So, I have a question, Randy. Are alleys assessed the same as streets, even though they're not streets?
I, in terms of the methodology or, or footage?
Well, I mean, they're not streets. And does the market or the study come back and say, this alley is now a street?
No, but they will look, the, the appraiser has looked, uh, so we've done two LE improvements, 2017 and in 2021. The appraiser will look at the nature of the prod, of the property again, whether it's residential, commercial. Um, and then they do recognize that it's LE access versus, uh, say, a street access. So, they do take into account the level of access that they have, but they don't call it a, they call it a surface...
Yep, surface improvement.
Yes.
So, if the, if they assume or take into account that the alley doesn't get much action or, or travel, then it's less of an assessment?
Not, not necessarily. Not necessarily. So, again, they're not looking at necessarily the traffic. Uh, they're looking at conditions where a property has street and LE access, and it goes from an unimproved state to an improved state. So, they're comparing like properties with street and LE access.
Okay, thank you. Counselors? Any other questions on that one? Motion and second, 20, ordering, uh, improvements for preparation plans, 2023 street improvements, 2023-19. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Elm Street?
Make a motion to approve of the resolution. What, do you have a question?
Well, no, we, looking for a second motion.
Okay.
Resolution 2023-20.
I move to approve the resolution for 23-2020, ordering the plans of Elm Street improvements.
I second it.
Motion and second, Resolution 2023-20, ordering improvements, prep plans for 2024 Elm Street East improvements. Questions or concerns on that? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And then, we need a... And then we need a engagement letter for our market or a motion for, I'll make a motion to approve the engagement letter between the City of St. Joseph and it's Nagel.
Nagel?
Nagel? Appraisal Incorporated.
Second?
Motion in second, engagement letter for the City of St. Joe and Nagel Appraisals. Questions or concern? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Very good. Thanks, Randy. Thank you all for your comments. Did you agree again? No, it doesn't matter. Item eight, consideration of lease agreement. Lori?
Well, good evening. Work in progress. Operation lease for the St. Joseph Community Center and YMCA, for the YMCA to operate the future center. We started this agreement, well, it's been at Toxin for many years. We signed, signed or agreed with the YMCA to adopt a memorandum of understanding for the future operations, and it kind of spelled out who is going to be responsible for what costs. That was adopted in September of twenty twenty-one. Since that date, we've hired an architect, a construction manager, and a capital campaign fundraising consultant to help us move forward with the project, come up with a preliminary design, estimate what those costs are. And on the side of that, also trying to narrow down the actual operating lease with the YMCA. The YMCA has partnered with us since that MOU was adopted in twenty twenty-one to kind of help us with even hiring these consultants, doing some community outreach as to what features the community might be looking for in the facility and helping us get to that pre-design phase. Through negotiations back and forth, we, we have met or presented to the council what those costs might look like in February of this year, looking at different options of if we could do the full build of the pre-design versus maybe a scaled back version. We had met again with Kinetic, which is Hartzuk, changed their name to Kinetic for the capital campaign for for that consultant. And they reiterated that they, their stretch campaign goal is fourteen million and they feel that they can, they can get there. But to do any of the capital campaign, we really need to get the operating lease in place. Potential donors want to see that we have the means to be able to operate the facility once it's constructed and and in place. And so having the YMCA is is a critical partner in that. As we've had those interviews with some potential donors, it's, it is the business that they do is operating these types of facilities, knowing what the market is out there to attract memberships and daily users to the facility. So before they move forward, they want to make sure that that agreement was, that agreement is in place. So since February, when we last presented numbers, we've kind of reworked some numbers based on the full build and just keep it at the full build of what the preliminary design was. Three gyms, kids' zone, family pool, walking tracks, some fitness area, meeting space, and social, social gathering spaces. So based on that preliminary design, we're recommending to keep the the lease just focused on that. It is actually the least amount that the city is asked to contribute into the facility. It is based on what the MOU that we adopted, what our, our, our portion of the the operating cost would be. There's only two exceptions from the MOU to the proposed lease agreement and that have changed. One of them is the refuse and recycling costs. The city has offered to pick up those costs to the operations. And the reason is, is because we contract for those services and the city facilities are included in that contract. So we're proposing to continue that with that facility as well. And then the other piece is based on the fundraising reach that Kinetic fills that we can get to, fourteen million in the capital campaign, and the estimated preliminary design costs that we received from Goman Construction, we feel that we could add in a million dollars to the furniture and fixtures that the YMCA would have had to upfront on that cost. But because we have room in that capital campaign and because the YMCA is partnering with us in that activity and actually also holding, taking care of the paperwork of the pledges and and that piece of it, we're proposing to have up to a million dollars of the FFNE to be included in the capital campaign. So those two changes are the only two changes from where we were at with the MOU to getting to this final lease agreement. The lease agreement is proposed to be a twenty-year lease agreement with a clause to extend an additional twenty years. If something happens where a party needs to back, back out, there is a clause in the operating lease that the city would have to reimburse the YMCA for improvements that still had useful life left. And it is only the amount of remaining useful life of those improvements. So for instance, if they upgraded, say, some filters in the pool and they spent ten thousand dollars on those filters, two years later, we terminate the lease agreement and there's still maybe five years left on those filters, we would have to pay that remaining value of the five years of those filters to the YMCA, so. So that protection is in there, in there for, you know, that we don't turn around and then terminate something that they've put in some substantial dollars into the the building.
Counselors?
So what do we need a motion to do here?
A motion to.
Do we need two motions for one for the operating and one for the lease or all in one?
The lease and the developers agreement, correct? That's, those are the two? Yeah, it's just a single motion to authorize the, approve the lease agreement and developers agreement.
So moved?
Second.
Motion in second to approve the operations lease and lease agreement and developers agreement. Questions or concern?
Yes. So on the developers agreement, and Lori, we kind of touched on this earlier, earlier today on page eighteen, section four point six, campaign.
And thank you for bringing that up because I did have changes I have worked with. Sudegi, I did get in touch with her. She's actually traveling, so she's not available for the meeting tonight. But I was able to get in touch with her earlier this afternoon on modifying the language. And she also reached out to the YMCA attorney and Greg Jake as well. We've all partnered and talked about this. So this piece of the capital campaign, we're proposing to strike out, in the second sentence there, there's a strikeout that's highlighted in yellow. Just to clarify that this campaign talks about the YMCA holding the pledges. So they're going to do all that paperwork. A pledge comes in, we have to give tax forms, we have to monitor those pledges, might be over a five-year period. So they need to set out notices, okay, now it's time for your next installment of your pledge, those types of things. The YMCA is going to handle all of that at their bank account. Quarterly, they will be transferring the funds into the city. The city will accept those donations at that time and will be tracking those costs. So this piece of it is really talking about how the Y's position there to to handle those pledges. Then the last sentence where I have the highlight, this fiscal sponsorship agreement is actually an agreement that will possibly be put in place in the future just describing how those pledges are going to be handled. And we have, both of us have worked with our auditors as well to ensure that we're in compliance with, you know, statutes and and different regulations that we both have to adhere to.
Kevin? Thank you.
Yeah, that last sentence, if requested by the Y, the city shall execute and deliver a fiscal.
Sponsor agent.
Agreement.
And if you actually look up that definition, Google it, and it will talk about just this, these types of pledge agreements, holding those pledges. That is what it is.
Thank you. Okay. Bob?
I just got one question. Okay, so every year at budget time, what number am I going to see on the overall budget that's going to impact the overall budget?
So we still do have some operating costs that we're responsible to in this agreement. The utilities, snow removal in the parking lot, building maintenance. We will have to still, we have to upkeep this building as well, so we have, you know, our share into that. There will be some repairs that we're going to be responsible to. And so on average, over this twenty years, I I estimated about a hundred and forty-three thousand will be the city's responsibility. And the average I calculated for the YMCA is about eight hundred and forty thousand. Now, they're collecting the sponsorship fees that they're, you know, membership fees and and passes and things to cover their share of the cost. Our share will be, if we use levy for that hundred and forty-three thousand average, is about two point six percent of the tax rate.
Okay, so there'll be a separate, I mean, will there be a separate category now, a new category?
We will have a separate department, actually, yes, we will have, actually, this will be a separate fund that we will maintain for the community center.
Okay, so there'll be an add-on for another, say, department hypothetically.
It is called the community center. I actually have that department already built in the chart of accounts.
Okay, all righty.
Motion in second. Go back to what I said. Motion in second approving the lease and developers agreement between the city and YMCA. Yeah, Bob, go.
Okay, let's say Harstuck Kinetic doesn't fulfill. Is there a back out on this whole?
So our lease is based on the full build. If that is, it doesn't hap- the full build doesn't happen, then this lease is terminated and we'll have to renegotiate another lease and so. Because then we're talking, there's different operational costs that the city might have to.
This is all under, under, if Harstuck raises the funds?
This is assuming twenty-four million dollars.
Yeah.
Twenty-four mil- yeah, million-dollar project.
Okay. Can I start again? Motion in second approving the lease and developers agreement between the city and YMCA. Further questions or concern? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye, opposed. Motion does carry. Thanks, Lori, thanks, Greg. Jeff, I know you're online. Kayla, whoever else helped with this, it was a yeoman's task to get it done. Thank you all.
Congratulations all.
Hey, Jeff. Who was that mouse man? The Go's.
God has spoken.
All right, way to go.
All right. Item eight, nine, do we do our engineers? I got any more, Randy?
He's not burping.
Oh, yeah.
You got more? Engineers report?
Yes.
Oh.
A very brief one. I I was just, we mostly are. I was going to say we followed up on your question from last council meeting regarding the drainage around that northeast quadrant at Seventeenth and Baker. We're going to add to the punch list with the contractor for the twenty twenty two improvements. I think we can improve the drainage coming around. So I think the lip, the lip that you saw was the paved collar around the back of it.
Doesn't, water doesn't get there though, does it?
It it does, but not as as efficiently as we think we can. So we're going to have the contractor reshape that the luminous least around the radius. We think we can make it better.
I just saw a big pool before the catch base, I'm thinking here we have problems in the two year. Okay, thank you for doing that, Randy.
You bet. That's it.
Very good. Uh, department reports, let's start with Kayla.
Yeah, real brief. So David, if you're on, hello. He starts next Monday, so we're excited to have him on board. He has been continuously communicating with staff.
Good.
Last week, this week. He sat in on our agenda meeting last Tuesday and will tomorrow as well.
Good.
So he's, he's finding out all the fun things that are happening in St. Joseph right now. Regarding congressional directed spending opportunity, what we had submitted to Senator Kolbisher's office, I did get an email on the fourteenth of April that our requests have been submitted. So this is a request for the community center additional funds that has been submitted to the Senate Appropriations Committee. They'll review select projects for potential funding and we'll find out the result of that early June, late June, early July.
And that's the twenty twenty-four appropriations bill?
Correct. Community Development Department coverage update. Nate had met with, met with SEH staff. I was sick, still am kind of sick, getting through that. So I will meet with him on the the twenty-fourth, next Monday, just to go over coverage, processes, what we want to do while Nate's out, how they want to see information coming into them and vice versa. Miscellaneous items, so the city is eligible for redesign of the website. And so it's a six to eight month long process. Kind of been putting it off a little bit until David starts. No extra cost to the city. It's included in our contract that we have a Civic Plus. But just an FYI, that they'll be, that it will be coming down the pipeline. I did meet with Pat Schneider on the town ball.
Can I interrupt about that?
Yeah.
So the last time we did that, Dale Wick and I sat down with those guys and tried to make it real simple. And it looks like, you know, it's not. It's, but if you have any interest, web experience and want to participate, we're more than welcome because Dale and I tried, we just couldn't get it. There, there's just so much there. And so if you want to participate, I would highly recommend it. I am bowing out because I did a terrible job last time. I mean, I did as good, we did as good as we could, but it's just an immense task to try and figure it out. Anyway, sorry. No, I think it's, you know, it's good for you to look at that stuff because it's more complicated than you think it is. And we went through several drafts of pushing stuff around. It's just very, very complicated. Anyway, sorry.
Yeah, so I did meet with Pat Schneider on the town ball tour that'll be coming to St. Joseph July fifth. He is looking for sponsors for the event, so if anybody out there listening wants to be a sponsor for the event, they can do so, they can contact Pat directly. I know that he is working on advertisement materials to get to me so I can get that out. But it's still kind of to be determined. He's unsure of some of the details yet, so.
Does that group, I I heard there's a group and they meet regularly or irregularly?
There's a group. I don't know, Ryan, if you got involved in Pat's group yet? No, he's going to attend to.
No, I haven't attended one yet, but I will be attending her next one as soon as they get it scheduled.
Okay, you should, you should probably go too, I think, just to hear what they're doing. Or get a report from Ryan. That's even better, okay. Okay, very good.
Yeah, so upcoming meetings, so on the twenty-fourth, I'll be meeting with SEH via Zoom. We have the all-city board meeting next Tuesday at five. Safety and Loss Control Workshop on the twenty-seventh, that'll be in St. Cloud. And then Lori and I'll be attending a pay equity meeting, just an update on the twenty-eighth.
Very good, thanks, Kayla. Any questions? Very good. Nate, you next?
Yes, good evening, mayor and counselors. So just to highlight, I'll start with economic development. I've met with a few developers that have local connections who have expressed interest in the boutique hotel concept. Development inquiries for the industrial park continue to be strong. We've had some pre-development meetings. And of course, one of those projects has moved forward with the Gooden project. So the planning commission did meet on April tenth and hold a public hearing for the conditional use permit for Gooden. With that, there's also a couple other items that will be coming forward to the council at the May first meeting. The planning commission also did hold another public hearing for a proposed zoning amendment. If you recall, back in last year, there was a zoning amendment that was proposed to amend the rural residential district to allow wedding or event venues in the rural residential as a conditional use. So the planning commission received that same application. The applicants had a right to come back after a year. So they have proceeded to come back and request that amendment. The planning commission did recommend to deny that on a seven to zero, or a five to two vote for that proposal. CBB met, kind of as Kayla touched on, the town ball will be held July fifth. So please continue to spread the word on that. For East Park, we've had, had to make some adjustments on the timeline for that. Kind of what we're balancing right now is multiple funding sources. So we have the DNR grant and then the LCCMR. And we cannot proceed with our, part of our project into the LCCMR funds, our official. the L C C M R, and we cannot proceed with our, part of our project into the L C C M R funds are officially approved. Best case scenario, that's the end of July, which would then mean that we could potentially start in August. Essentially, what that means is we would look at doing preliminary design in probably September, final design in November, project bidding in March of next year, and then construction start in May or June of next year. So we've had to push that back and have been in correspondence with the D N R on the logistics of that, and they are understanding, given that we received both L C C M R and their, their grant, and bound by those timelines. As far as meetings and events, have held lots of meetings in regards to development proposals, various trainings, and then also, as Kayla had mentioned, I met with S C H just regarding community development department coverage and while I'm gone on F M L A. And of course, I'm here, so the baby hasn't come yet. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kevin?
So going back to the planning commission meeting with the wedding venue people, and the five to two vote to deny, does, do, does those people, will they be coming back to the planning commission under a different, or to the city council?
Nope, so that'll be forwarded onto the city council. That'll likely be the May-
What's gonna be forwarded to the city council?
The request to amend the zoning ordinance to allow the use in the rural residential as a conditional use.
And it was a five to two vote?
Yep, yep, so that'll be their recommend, so we'll include that recommendation in the report.
Five were against-
Amending.
And two were-
Were four.
Which two were in favor of amending it?
So that would be Councilor Lozo, and then, I believe, is Osterman.
Hazen.
Oh, John Hazen, not Mike.
Was it? Hazen? Okay, okay, my mistake.
So I guess I wanna get a sense, Councilman Lozo, as to why you would approve a wedding venue in the rural residential district?
Why? Because when we created the rural residential district for us that were there, that was created, that was kind of a-
You mean us that were, that you weren't there?
I was there running this whole annexation.
This is part of the annexation process.
But you didn't live in the rural residential district. You lived in town.
Right, but I was, I was part of the, putting together the annexation at that time, and part of the discussion was the R R. Okay, the R R designation came into effect when we started talking about taxes. The annexation area didn't wanna be taxed, like the city was taxed. So with Lori's help, if I remember right, we created a special district and labeled it R R to accommodate the difference in taxes. So, and why am I for it? Because I think it's a perfect, perfect use for that sixty acre parcel. When you look at that, they're gonna put probably forty percent of it in conserva, conservati-
Conservatory.
Yeah, conservatory, in perpetuity, so it's not gonna, it's, to me, it's a lot better than building, which was a zone for, to build a hundred and some houses in there, but it's cost prohibitive unless you got deep pockets.
Well, and to my understanding, it's a smaller venue, not a larger venue, and they are going to, they have been, to my understanding, working with Woodcrest, to be able to do walkways, you know, so that they can walk in there. And then also being able to set up, if I'm, unless they changed it, Nate, but when I had spoke with them before, to be able to open up a kind of a, a shelter for the school to be able to come in and learn different things in the back area there with the conservatory. So learning about the woods and things like that. So it's not gonna be just a wedding venue. They have, they want to be giving back, and not to mention using the businesses in St. Joe. You know, their catering and things like that. They want to supply and support St. Joe with their businesses, is what my understanding was for them.
So, just to interrupt, but whatever we're talking about here, we're gonna talk about May one.
Yeah, it'll come up again.
Well, I'm just saying, in May one, all the discussions we're having here-
I know. I'm not, I'm not in favor of it.
It's, it's a five million dollar project. It's less evasive to that property out there. It kinda maintains a rural atmosphere. You know, instead of, you know, like, some people sit on the board and say, it's a get, you know, it maintains it, or even enhances it. It's, it's a, to me, it's a perfect fit.
Any other questions?
And the people are serious about it. They're really serious.
I get it. Okay, thanks Nate.
Anyway, my two cents. Finance.
Thank you.
Kinda keep mine short and sweet, just an update on the software conversion. We've gone through training now and implemented on all the major modules. The last module that we implemented was payroll, so you've probably seen your pay stub look a little different this time. So now we're kind of just in the learning mode and, and continuing to understand the system. So kudos to all the staff that really has spent a lot of time trying to understand this, the new system. And I kinda threw a wrench into everything and changed some of the chart of accounts, some of the account codes, so that's given the department heads a little bit of a challenge too, to figure out how to code things. So one last piece that will be there with the software is gonna be the budget piece, and we'll get to that more in the summer. No sense on training on it now if I'm not gonna have time to get to it for two months, and similar with the staff, but we'll get there, so. Update two on the accountant, so as you recall, ABDO is doing some consulting work with, with my department, trying to help us keep up with some things in the background, some reconciliations. And actually, I've been having them work on some audit work papers, 'cause one of the things we did is push back our audit till May, so that's looming around the corner as we speak. So they've been very helpful in getting some work papers done, and, and will continue to do that, so that's been definitely a stress reliever on, on my part, so I appreciate you allowing me to have that consultant. And then, kinda just the final thing that I wanted to put on my report is the pay equity study. As Kayla said, her and I have a meeting a little bit later on that, just to kinda further that along. So where that project is at right now is department heads are reviewing their job descriptions with their staff, kinda going through that and making sure everything's in line, and also kinda being a little bit forward-looking as to what those positions are. And those job descriptions will be put against the job evaluation system that the consultant has for that, to help score each of the jobs, and make sure that we're paying fairly for those positions. One meeting to note that hasn't been brought up, S K WAC meeting this week, so I think it's probably you and I, Ryan, that we'll be going there for an update. I think some of it's gonna be the Foley project, but also we're in the process of updating the sewer use agreement with St. Cloud, which takes, seems like years to get that all. Even if it's just an update, it takes years to get that in place with, you know, now seven communities, so. Any questions?
Money bonding, if they're on the list or not? I mean, I haven't gotten an update, I haven't talked to her in a while, so.
And I'm sure Sarah will be there too, to talk about those updates.
Okay, any questions for Lori, anyone? Very good, thanks Lori. Everybody read the fire, 'cause I don't see chief here.
Yeah, he wasn't able to attend.
Yeah, yeah. Public Works, Ryan?
Good evening.
Can I just plow again anytime soon?
Put those plows away, buddy.
Yep. Well, we kicked off street sweeping last Friday, the first snow day.
Really?
And then I-
Right in the middle of the snowpark?
Really pissed off Mother Nature. Turned a one-eighty on us. No, so I kinda just put some, some numbers together for, for council and staff. Twenty-four snow events now this year. A little better than ninety-two inches of snow total fall. That is our calculation, and we keep track down at the pumps, the main pump station. So every snowfall and every rainfall, we, we keep a tally down there. So the St. Cloud Airport might have something a little bit different, but that's our, our tally. Went through five hundred and fifty tons of road salt. I've got some hard numbers there and repair parts. Total road miles traveled by all snow equipment was ten thousand four hundred and sixty-five miles, two thousand one hundred and ninety-three gallons of fuel, forty-four cutting edges, nine curb runners, and three hundred, actually, it's a little bit more than three hundred and ten loads of snow hauled out of the city this year. So we had a, we had a busy winter. So for our twenty-two D N R water report, we were at ninety-nine point zero seven percent accountable for all water. It was pulled a lot of our wells, so that's a, that's a good number, so. Hundred fifty-seven million gallons worth of water used last year. Dog park, I have an Eagle Scout coming in, and I've got the rough draft preliminaries. He's gonna do a, some, some dog entertainment pieces. There'll be a bridge, little jumping station, those are the two amenities that'll be out there late this summer, and then he's got two younger brothers coming up behind him as Eagle Scouts, so we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna add on to this project.
Yeah, they're, they're Eagle Scouts.
Yeah. No storm router report is due to the state this year. They'll be doing their report content, so next year I'll just have to do the last, the, the two last previous years. As far as potholes go, I've been through, or I've gone through twenty tons of cold patch mix so far. We have hydrant flushing scheduled for the entire city, May twenty-second through the twenty-sixth, so we sent out notices through social media, cable television, internet, and so forth. Have been working with Pat on town ball. We've, we, him and I have had a couple of one-on-one meetings with that. Everything is going good. Busy fixing up curb stops, plow damages, staff. Other than that, as business as normal. As far as upcoming events, weekly staff meetings, safety training, monthly Samuia, development meetings, park board, and yes, we meet with St. Cloud on Thursday. pending any questions?
Councilor Klusner?
So Ryan, the hardscape work that was done on Minnesota Street, was that last year or the year before?
You talking about?
The streetscape?
Yeah, the streetscape. The trees, so if one or more of those trees was to suffer damage, or isn't growing right, or needs to be replaced, is that on us or on the contractor?
Now it is, there was a one-year warranty with those.
Okay.
So.
And who monitors the health of those trees?
I do.
Okay. Thank you.
I gotta greet them.
Any other questions? Thanks Ryan. Chief?
Well, we're typing these reports a week ago, so that we get them to the council on time, so last week, when it was eighty degrees, it seemed like winter was gone, and here we are, so.
It was gone.
It was gone. Made a return, so, yeah. So I started out by saying it's coming around fast, and we went backwards, so that's fine. It has kinda helped us a little bit with student activities. Last week, I was told that they were very active. They're gonna continue to stay active. We did, we were very successful for St. Patrick's Day in, in getting the message out in advance, and working with the students. I did return from my chief's meeting in Duluth and went right with the college dean from St. John's and met with the residents that are preparing for case day. They were not as receptive to canceling. We offered the same suggestions and potential penalties. They're taking it under advisement, so to speak. They, they told us they would get back to us, so we'll see how that goes. So we're gonna do a follow-up tomorrow and see what resolutions they've come up with. So as far as that goes, I'm working on some garbage complaints. When I got back on Friday, I was advised by two of my staff that they had went out and addressed nine college rentals that were in violation of furniture and different debris outside, so they were working on that. So we're working on different things like that, getting some stuff cleaned up. Last week, when I typed this report, Madison was nearly finished with field training. Today, she did her first solo shift in her own car, although there was other staff on as well. She did great. And I was at the Minnesota Chiefs Conference last week, a lot of great training on officer wellness, P T S D, a lot of the current trends that are happening right now, so bringing a lot of that stuff back for the department. And then the TAMSEC parties, which is the college's unofficial sanctioned last forty days of having a party, is underway. Those have been fairly good because they're senior onlys. Case days is this Saturday. We're gonna miss a snow event by one day, it could have been on Saturday, but it's gonna be on Friday, so. And then graduation, some other spring activities coming up, so.
Questions, anyone? Yes, Councilor Klusner?
Chief, so I've been thinking about the officers that have been shot in the line of duty the last couple of weeks. Wisconsin, Western Minnesota. What's the protocol that our department has when one of our cops goes on a domestic?
Well, I mean, ideally, it'd be nice if it's more than one officer. That would be ideal, which is what we've been kinda working to build up, you know, and you can't keep going backwards in time and saying, well, back in nineteen twenty-three, we had this, nineteen fifty, we had this. When I started in St. Joe in two thousand and two, we were a six-person department, and the chief and a sergeant were involved in that number. Now we're a twelve-person department. We have a chief, two sergeants, and the rest of them are patrol officers, so nine of them. So in theory, it's nicer to be able to have multiple officers working at, at one time, but we're not unique to having calls that big cities do as well. So as far as protocols go, when the call comes in, we have to get there as fast as possible. If that particular night, we're waiting for a Stearns County deputy or a Wade Park officer to arrive, we try to wait for backup if possible, but preservation of life and property is, is more important. Sometimes we have to go in alone, so more so life than property at that point. It's kinda what we're seeing in a lot of these mass shootings as well. I mean, you take back to the days of Columbine and stuff, some of the biggest things that they've analyzed in some of these were waiting too long to get official, you know, CERT teams, SWAT teams, whatever your flavor is, you know, different kinds of emergency response vehicles versus engaging the threat. You're gonna lose people on the way, but you hope that you save more than you lose.
So I guess the question more is, when we read about these things and see these things, what is it that we do with the department in terms of coaching, or training, or what have you, or just discussions around the coffee pot?
Well, we definitely take note of them, and, you know, the thing is, is it's, it's kinda one of those things that oftentimes at a council level, you don't know what all happens behind the scenes, and, and I've, I've talked with different past city administrators and stuff as well, and I said, sometimes my reports can't be as in-depth. Like, you know, I was at home yesterday, and I received a call from one of my sergeants, and, and we had a potentially high-risk entry yesterday. And so we were playing through all the different scenarios of how we're gonna do this, if we're gonna go after the individual or not, and, and we wrapped that up today with the person coming out peacefully. There was no endangerment to any kind of public at the time, but at the same token, it's not something that we go to the papers or to the press right away and say, hey, this is what happened in St. Joe today, but they're happening everywhere. Our town is no different. They happen at all hours of the day, they happen in the daylight, they happen at midnight, so, you know, we try to do what we can to keep our officers safe, both mentally and physically as well, but the, the risks are there, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question? Very good. Item eleven, mayor council reports, and I just have a couple of-
Recreation.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Rhonda, it says right there, Rhonda, recreation, oh. Sorry, Rhonda.
It's all right. Just goes with some of the highlights that we've had. We tried bingo this winter, and it was well-attended. I expected maybe ten, fifteen people, and the first night I had seventy-five, so, so we'll do that again next year. Pickleball, we started this year at Kennedy with Community Ed, and that has been very popular. The courts have been full each night. Summer rec signup is going on. It, most of my sessions are full, so it ends, signups end next week. Still looking for coaches for the summer activities, so if anybody's interested, let me know. We did get a donation of a thousand dollars from Shields towards the basketball hoops. We were awarded a Minnesota Twins grant for coaches for two thousand dollars, but I have to find high school and college kids who are willing to coach. We did get eight thousand from them also to improve Millstream Field. We put on adult flashlight dash on the seventh of April. We put on an adult flashlight dash on the seventh of April. And again, first time, wasn't expecting a whole lot of people and got two hundred. So, that was, it was fun to watch also. All you could see is lights running around the fields. It was, it was awesome. That was hilarious. It was amazing. It was good, and a lot of-
It was amazing.
Lot of business in towns, businesses in town donated some nice prizes for that. So, that was awesome. I have some art classes going on by, a college student is in charge of those. Olivia Hansen, she's an art major at St. Ben's, and she's doing a great job. We had her first class last Saturday and her next one is this coming Saturday. So, those have been great. There are a couple samples sitting in my office if anybody wants to see what they did. And then in the parks, we have Millstring Park, working on that field, one field for sure this year. Get that fixed up. And then Hollow Park, we're gonna put new equipment in there. Their equipment was put in in two thousand and five, so it's time for replacements. And if someone were to come and check it, it is out of compliance with, for safety. So, need to get that taken care of. And then we're gonna work on a plan for Klein filter, since it's highly used and the slides and everything is, are cracked in there. We'd like to work on a plan to get that wheelchair accessible at that park. I do need some direction from you as to the community outreach picnic. We started it two years ago as a way to, there was some vandalism and a lot of trash building up in that park. So, we invited the community nearby and the community members that use the park most to that. So, that was the initial, original purpose of that picnic was to address the vandalism and the, and the garbage that was collecting. But the second reason we did it, we, we wanted to involve our Somali residents because a lot of those participants on the basketball court are Somali boys. And so, we wanted to get the families, see if we could get them involved in community things and, and, you know, help them to get to know the rest of the residents in that area. The second year we did it, we had a lot more people attend, so that was awesome. But with the purpose being to try and get them to be involved in the community, it's not happening. So, I don't know if it's just something they don't do is be involved in their community. I'm trying to get to a cultural bridges meeting with them, but the last one I was supposed to be at, they canceled it because of weather. So, I'm still looking for the next one to come up. The three-on-three basketball that we play Wednesday nights in the summer is well-attended and it's a blast. I love going to that. That's our older kids, sixteen on up, and I've got kids as old as twenty-one coming to play. And it's, it's great. We have the police department involved this year with that more. And they, they do, they are understanding about putting their own garbage in the garbage cans, that it's not somebody's job to do that for them. So, they're, they're picking up on that, you know, they're kids, so they tend to forget, but they're working on it. I do have people asking me why we don't move that picnic for the city to other parks. And I just need to know how to respond to that, if we're gonna keep doing it or if, because its purpose really isn't serving what it was intended for, if we stop doing it. Just need some direction.
Okay.
And then upcoming events, we've got the women of today are partnering with us for May thirteenth bike event. May twentieth, we have movie in the park at Millstream Park with the movie Puss in Boots, The Last Wish. And May twenty-fourth is our seniors' trip to the Twins game. The next park board meeting is next Monday.
Questions? Just one, you, and part of the, you ordered the Hollow Parks, if you, we allowed Hollow Park. Any idea how long it'll take or anything?
They're twelve weeks out right now.
Okay, very good. Yes, Mr. Klusner?
I thought we were gonna, like, expand those basketball courts at Centennial. Is that in the budget for this year?
Yes, yes.
That's part of the thousand dollars from Shields, right?
Yes, yes, because with that thousand dollars, we're able to get better hoops for the same cost. So, yes, as soon as the concrete guys can get me on their schedule, because they are behind, we will get that in.
Very good.
And I just think, the comment of direction, I think we should at least give it one more year with the picnic to see what kind of collection that we can come up with. That would just be my two cents.
Think we can talk about it in a work session?
Okay.
I'm on number, is it okay if eleven goes now? Councilors, you want, anything you want to report on? Okay, so the CBB meeting was held, but they're gonna have a all, like, all downtown business meeting on May sixteenth at the Bad Habit. They're talking about tons of engagement and planning events and social discussion and media and stuff like that. But that's May sixteenth at six, I think they said. Okay, Bad Habit. And they're really invited, I mean, any can, anybody can attend, but it's probably primarily for the businesses and, and planning events and stuff. I'm meeting with, I'm gonna be at the Capitol on Thursday. I meet with Eric Putnam. It looks like, just on recent communication, that there will be no local option sales tax for any city in the state of Minnesota this year. They formed a committee to evaluate it. And there'll be like three House members, three Senate members, League of Minnesota City Coalition and some others to determine, I don't know what. So, it, I mean, at the present, it doesn't look like we're gonna get local option sales tax. We did, however, in the current sales tax bill, there's sales tax exemption on construction materials between June thirtieth, twenty-one and before January first of twenty twenty-five. That's probably a little, we may have to look at that in twenty twenty-four again to extend it, but that's in the bill right now. And I went up and met with David last week and we talked about, just a little bit about projects going on, where staff is at, where we're at. I think one of his first, and he might be online and want to chime in, but one of the, we talked about goal setting and how fast do we like to move on that and get us in a session. So, the first, when he's here on the twenty-fourth, the twenty-fifth is like a work session. I've, I've asked staff to prepare a where we've been, where we are, where we want to be kind of thing. And so, he can kind of start formulating his goal and goal session, goal-setting session. I mean, I think that's high on his priority list and I, I welcome that, I really do. Outside of that, that's about all I have. Any questions, concerns? I had it very good. Oh, got Mr. Klusner? I don't have an update on bonding, that's why I'm meeting with Eric. The bonding is held up because the House wants, well, the House wants like nine million of something and the Senate wants two million, but the House wants to bond for it. The Senate wants to pay it down as cash. So, the caucuses aren't agreeing on anything right now. I would suspect over the next four weeks, there's gonna be a lot of push and pull. And if there isn't a bonding, I think that, that's kind of the Republican flavor. They'd rather pay for things, not take on the debt and then worry about next year's budget and bonding that way. So, it may not be a true bonding session. It will be a project-related kind of cash projects for infrastructure. That's my impression, but I'll find out more on Thursday. Any other questions, concerns? Item twelve?
Move to adjourn.
Motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.